A call to the quarterly meeting of the Manawha Avenue Regional School District. It's time in the 6:31, apologies. The New Jersey Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or agreed upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Manawha Avenue Regional School District Board of Education advertised this meeting on May 15th, 2020, for the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. These notices were sent to the municipal clerks of the Borough of Manawha and the township of Avenue and the Manawha Avenue Public Library. These notices were also placed on the district's public website. Please stand for the pledge.
The United States of America, to the Republic of America, for the sake of the nation, under God, with the full liberty and justice of our
Thank you. Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Ms. Martinez?
Here.
Mr. McGougher?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Ms. Warrenke?
Here.
Mrs. Foley?
Here.
Ms. Scott? Thank you, everybody. We're going to have a short executive session. Be it resolved that a closed session be convened for the purpose of discussing privacy, personnel, and legal matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when reason for confidentiality subsides, although the board cannot guarantee that the length of the executive session is estimated to be fifteen minutes. After which, the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and proceed with business. Action will take place. Can I have a motion in a second to go to the executive session?
I'll move on to the next one.
You're in an executive session. Can I have a motion in a second to agree to four signs to the board?
I'll second.
I'll do the board presence report. Oh, that's me. At the next meeting, I'm going to do a presentation of the update of the final of our orgos, how we did this year. I can't ask for tonight, but we have a lot on the agenda, so I thought perhaps we would just move on to the superintendent's report. But I wanted to say congratulations to all of the graduates at all of the levels and all the people that were promoted and moving up. Last week was a whirlwind, but it was fun, too. Now we get to be in the relaxed mode for a little while while everybody, although business happens behind the scenes. And thank you for everybody who made it. Sorry for those that couldn't, that's okay, too. I guess that's about it. I really am eager to hear the superintendent's report with the MTSS update.
Thank you. Good evening. So we are going to use the slide that we've created, so if you need to adjust, see if you can see this better now. Okay. All right. So this evening, we're going to talk about MTSS, Multi-Tiered System of Supports. And so the purpose of this evening is to educate the board on what we're doing in terms of program delivery for interventions. And our primary focus, we'll talk about MTSS and interventions. The primary audience will be elementary students K to five. While we do have interventions in secondary, system 12, we're going to focus tonight on elementary. So the first slide that you see is the pyramid of MTSS. So this is important to understand in terms of what are we responsible for, what are we required to do? So the Department of Education of New Jersey says school districts are required to have some type of intervention process. It should be data-driven. There should be a backbone of assessments that gives us that data, and it should be done in tiers. That's pretty much the three requirements that state gives the districts. From that point, it's up to the district to decide how they're going to deliver those interventions. So what we do in Manawha Avenue is that we follow a tiered model approach, which again is best practice and is recommended by New Jersey. So we'll take a look at the slides. It's a pyramid, so starting at the bottom, we're going to start with students. At the bottom, it's saying that to an 80% to 90% of our students on any given day, any topic, receives some type of Tier One intervention. And I'll get into the definition of that later. So 80% to 90% of the kids, Tier One intervention. That's a universal intervention. Moving up the pyramid in the other, so Tier Two is a target group of interventions. We're looking at 5% to 10% of the students, call that category. For us, it's closer to 10%. Then moving up the pyramid again, it's in red, Tier Three, that's more intensive, individual work, small group, that's how we model it. It's 1% to 5%. Typically, in the lower elementary grades, it's 5% of the students. As you move further up the grades, four or five, it's usually about 1% of the students need that high-intensity intervention. If you notice with this particular pyramid, on the left side is academic, on the right side is behavioral, because the tier approach works for both academics and behaviors. Often, not always, but often, when a student is struggling academically, there may be a behavioral component. Sometimes we see behaviors because they're struggling with academics. So we included both sides of the pyramid, just because you're pretty good picture that we operate interventions for both, whether it's exclusive to one or a combination of both. So the first appropriate question would be, so how do we know who the ones have a particular tier? How do we place students in a tier? So all students grades K through five take a universal screener each year, so in September, students are welcome back, and they take particular tests for language arts and mathematics. That information is then collected, analyzed by teachers and by principals. And students are then identified either for a particular tier, and then based on the skill in those content areas, it pays us to some direction. Besides the personal screener, there are ongoing assessments. So we have the beginning of the year screener, then we benchmark at mid-year, and then we benchmark at the end of the year to measure progress. With the idea that hopefully exceeding growth, we even use students into tiers. We've included, we do a lot of different assessments besides the virtual screener, so just some that we put up there. Students who are entering kindergarten, we take our entry assessments, we do the fall, we do Twitter, we do iReady for ELA math. Mindview, which is our English and Spanish curriculum, has benchmark assessments for math, which is our math curriculum, has benchmark assessments. NJSLA, that's a statewide assessment that students take. They're taking third grade, but the data is for grades four to five. WEDA is for the Excel class for multi-language learners. And then, of course, there are curriculum assessments that are given in class by teacher, the core curricula. All of this information is used to help to make decisions for placing kids in tiers and who will come back. Of course, we analyze the data using implementers on this screen. So the takeaway from this is that we benchmark often, and we can settle the performance of assessments to give us a clear picture. So Tier One, as you can see, is at the bottom of the pyramid, it's 80% to 90% of the kids. There's a lot of stuff happening on this particular slide, and that's because most of the interventions take place with everything that's here. So I'll simplify everything that you see on the screen. This Tier One is, if you are a teacher, you hold a standard New Jersey certificate if you know how to do Tier One interventions. I'll give you a couple of examples. An example may be a teacher is providing a particular lesson in math or language arts, and a student doesn't understand a particular skill. They would ask the teacher, and so the teacher, "I don't understand," and the teacher would recognize that that student needs a little extra help. That's a Tier One intervention in its simplest form. Tier Two intervention may also be, through those assessments, be identified that students are struggling a particular skill. The teacher knows these people, they can get into class and present a lesson. That's some of the things we have listed on the screen. We may need to do for a majority of the students, so they do understand the skill. People can bump the next skill. So we've got the takeaway from Tier One, it's the charging of students. We identify through data, and this is what you see in a typical classroom pretty much every day. So Tiers Two and Three, so we're becoming a little more specific, so I'll still add a little bit of these two tiers. So Tier Two, so we're moving up the pyramid. This is 5% to 10% of our students who are kindergarten, fifth grade. It's fewer students, there's some students. It's high efficiency, it's rapid response. So we're using our core curriculum for Tier Two, Tier One and Tier Two. It's designed to meet the needs of students who are at risk of academic failure, but they're not at high risk. Not a Tier Three yet, but we're starting to identify some areas of weakness. We don't want them to fail, so we're using these Tier Two interventions to prevent that from happening. So what does it look like? And so these things are actually on the click, it's a discussion, it's approved by the board. So foundations, we've already talked about foundations, all the way back to October. So this is a phonics-based program that we had in the district, we're bringing back, we're retraining, we're reinvesting it. That in itself is a major, major step forward in terms of phonics and reading, teaching kids how to read and address it with those interventions. OGE is working on, just a multi-sensory flow of instruction specifically for reading. Teachers get trained, we'll talk more about that in a minute. Visualizing and verbalizing, another particular program that's been training to help with reading instruction. So Tier Two, it's a lot of skill drill practice, and we assess students in the EEP cycles to see if they're making progress, if they remain in Tier Two, or if they advance to Tier Three. So where does it happen? It happens in the classroom two, three times a week. Typically, it's 20 minutes, and I'll show you where that 20 minutes falls in just a moment. Here is the answer to a question that we could be putting up. What does it actually look like? Center time is where and when this happens. Teachers know how to do Tier Two interventions. It's been happening for a long time. Tier One has been happening for a long time, Tier Two's been happening. And so I'll give you an example. A student, so a teacher is doing a lesson on, let's say, long and short vowel sounds. We've identified that some students struggle with long and short vowel sounds through those assessments. The teacher realizes that there are a small group of students in her class reading more attention on vowel sounds. So she does a whole group lesson for 40 minutes, then breaks students into centers. So it's been pre-planned, students are pre-grouped. A group of students will work in a small group, and they may read and write, identify vowel sounds. Another small group will work at a table, and they will be listening to a recording recording, try to identify long and short vowel sounds. And then another group will work with the classroom teacher, who are at Tier Two, who need 20 minutes of reading information just to identify what the vowel sounds look like, where there's a tendency for vowels to pass miss, what it looks like in the structure of a sentence. So you have two small groups working independently, you have teachers that are at work, and then you have the people working specifically with the teacher. It's not a fun thing. Then on Tuesday, the teacher may rotate those groups, so groups you work with on Monday would go to the listening center, the listening center, the reading center, the contour of the teacher. Not of your concept, it's been happening for a long time, it's been happening in our district. That's Tier Two interventions. Like, as a former English, language arts teacher, this is something that I implemented in my classroom, in the Bible and the classroom after ten years. So 20 years ago, 22 years ago, this was a Tier Two intervention then, it just didn't have a label for it, but it's best practices for working with the teacher. Tier Three, this is the top of the pyramid in red, this is the 1% to 5% of our students. This is more intensive. It's usually individualized for a small group, two, three students who have the same need. It's based on assessments that show, as you can see on the second slide, this is high-intensity work. So what it may look like, we turn this off the program, it's similar to Tier Two. How and when? One of the latest differences would be about 30 minutes instead of 20 minutes, four to five times we need, instead of two to three times we need. It may happen in the classroom, or it may happen where students are pulled out. So this is Tier Three, we've had in the district for a long time. What we're seeing tonight is not the new model, that my newest conception of MTSS is something brand-new for September. It is not, we're doing MTSS, this is 2014, 2015. We take a look at who else basically filed, so this may be a little bit different in terms of additional staff and resources support. Remember that pyramid, there are two sides, the left side is academic and the right side is behavioral. Well, the folks listed up there, counselor, MTC, psychologist, social worker, ECPA, they may help the classroom teacher and students on the behavioral side, and they also support on the academic side. So that may be something you do for that board here, that may be due for newer teachers to MTSS, but that process has been around for a long time. So here's the next natural question, as great, great, so we've got a tier program, we have a great model, who's actually doing the interventions? Well, we mentioned Tier One, it is the classroom teacher with support from IAs if needed. The best example of that would be kindergarten. So our kindergarten classrooms have a classroom teacher, and they have an instructional system. This has been happening for ever. As long as we've had an instructional system named kindergarten classroom, that person has always helped the classroom teacher break into small groups. The IAM, they help with the calendar and colors while the classroom teachers do higher-level skills for the small. That's always been happening, it's not anything new. Tier Two, again, it's the classroom teacher with teachers, because we do have a dual teaching model, so there are classrooms K to five where there are two teachers within the classroom. With possible support from instructional systems, if they happen to be assigned to that classroom, we'll focus there on gen ed, not so much special, I mean, we see a lot of instructional systems. And there may be push-in teachers, we'll talk about them later. Tier Three, this is, now this is a small group, one-to-one, where sometimes it's in the classroom, sometimes the pull-ups students out. So it will be with a dual-certified teacher. Folks have been, have taken the visa, dual-certified teachers serves as the interventions. I'll give you an example in a moment. And you might see some support from service providers, we need that, this is what we just saw on the previous slide, it's been counselors, psychologists, ECPA. So what would it look like in terms of training, what would this additional teacher have? So we already have on staff, teachers who have training in OGE, we'll talk more about that in a minute, they're training, some are training Wilson, some are training with EMD, which is Visualizing and Verbalizing. We have dual-certified teachers who are elementary head and specialist. They're a second teacher in that teaching model, we already have them. We do have them, very lucky. We do have some teachers who have a second degree certificate in reading. We have some who have reading specialist certificates, already in the elementary building, already available to us to utilize. There may be some interventions, this list could come in with elementary certificate in eighth, for example, and have a secondary math certificate. That's a great, great use of some of the two certificates, push-in teachers. Our ESL teaching staff, ESL's considered an intervention. We've had ESL for a long time, those teachers are available to push in and to pull out, not only they're multi-language learners, but they can work with gen ed populations as well, so those students. And then sheltered English instruction, so that's your gen ed teacher who the district has provided strategies and tools when they have multi-language learners in the classroom, they can make those interventions, they can train them. So we have many elementary teachers already trained in self-instruction. So we add added staff members, already certificated and available, and I'll show you how that can be used, how it can be applied. So a sample schedule. Please, please, if you're seeing this and you have an elementary child at home, or your neighbors are asking what it's going to look like, this is not your child's schedule. This is just a sample of what it would look like in the framework of our principles, we'd work in front of this stuff. I said math-specific times, other things listed, like morning, evening, it's like I don't have anything here, but do some breakdowns. So I'm actually going to go to, whoops, the screen real quick. This might be a little bit easier if I walk through. Right, so two teachers, teacher A, teacher B, again, this is nobody specific, but teacher A, teacher B, but they both happen to start today with English, language arts. This, this is 120 minutes that we designate for reading and writing, which is language arts, the elementary stuff and the special. So we may do 40 minutes of Mindview, which is our English, language, drugs curriculum, then they may do 20 minutes of foundations, they may overlap a little bit, so you really should have about 40 minutes of foundations, then additional 20 minutes of reading comprehension. Teachers have the flexibility, period, wanting to float between those participants who are going to the language arts. Teachers know, they've been trained, that certain required components require more time, and so they understand the flexibility they have in this schedule. So 120 minutes of reading and writing. They have a lunch break, work in the middle of the day, they happen a little bit sooner, they happen a little bit later, teacher B, students go to specials, they make a math, now it's mid-afternoon, early afternoon, and they have 16 minutes of math. So ready math is out, district approved, math curriculum. Our math curriculum suggests 45 to 60 minutes a day for that particular math instruction. So we allocate 60 minutes. Within that 60 minutes, they may be doing 40 minutes of direct instruction, and then 20 minutes of small groups, maybe centers, they may work with the individuals, and that that will reduce the Tier Two interventions happening. And at the end of the day, we split that block, where we have content, which is social studies and science. So that's a 60-minute period, 30 minutes would be social study, science, if a block happened, that could work on a day, a day. And then the other 30 minutes of the 60 would be the intervention now. That's where we do the Tier Two, where another person pushes in, or it's a percentage of time, or Tier Three, where another teacher pushes in, pulls out, that's one. So you can see on teacher B, similar schedule, same in terms of events, slightly different in terms of when things might happen, that allows the flexibility of the other staff members. So the whole purpose of this is just to show you that we have all this instructional time, we know how to break it down, so we take the recommendations from our curriculum guidelines, we take a recommendation of best practices, Tier interventions, and we utilize this time, not only because of our instructional whole group, but also we use it for our Tier interventions. So what has changed, what remains? So again, MTSS as a model, not in the model. We've been in this for a while. What's changed? We've added foundations to grade two, we talked about that for a little while, so it used to be just K one, we've added grade two, we've already purchased materials, teachers have already been trained on the introductory piece of it. We're reintroducing foundations to K one, updated some of the materials, which I know are trained for K one teachers. We did restructure the daily schedule for intervention time, which you can just saw. So that 16 minutes of math used to be 90 minutes of math, we followed the recommendation of 60 minutes, which gave us 30 minutes to use for intervention. So that's the restructure of the daily schedule. The delivery method for interventions is changing, it's up to the, this year, where we had dedicated interventionist teachers who were pushing or pull-out, they've gone into classrooms, the school will push, they've gone into classrooms, but we're looking at other dual-certified staff that we can interventions. And of course, we're trying to increase training for staff, so they have a better understanding of what intervention is. What remains the same, the model itself is the same. ESL support, not changing. Special ed services and special ed programs, not changing. High-intensity interventions, that's Tier Three, not changing. How it deliberate changes, the programs themselves, not changing. Progress monitoring, that's checking, we assess the data, often, quarterly, we invite the principals to our central office, to our record, to myself, to actually look at the data, for this poor, poor students, tiers two, tier three. So that's important, progress monitoring has, these need to happen. And then faculty grade level meetings, so our teachers attend meetings after school, and we focus that, those meetings on teacher learning and looking at data specifically for interventions. Those types of conversations, training's having, always have, and we may have a little more of a focus of, maybe a little more structure from the principal delivering that information, but it's always the same. And then, we've talked about this quite a bit in terms of how do we support teachers related to interventions. So again, the model is not new, for many teachers, this is not new. Our veteran teachers have been doing this for a long time, but they may refresh it without it. It may be a new approach for our newer teachers, so we do offer professional development. So launching our foundations, that happened, happened two weeks ago. So our K two teachers have already had the foundation launched, they already have full day of training, they're ready to go to open the school with their foundations. We're doing, that's that multi-sensory, high-intensity reconstruction. We already have about 14 teachers trained. This summer, we have 25 teachers, we budgeted, who will be trained in OGE, so we're increasing that number quite a bit, so 25 new teachers will have that training back to their good. Then throughout the year, data analysis, we just mentioned, foundational support happens throughout the year, so part of us investing in foundations will not just the material, but the PDs of those K two teachers, it's not a one-stop PD that we continue to have professional development throughout the year, so they can look at foundations, intervention components, they can get the data, have a chance to ask questions, see how they're progressing, progressing. The next one, DIBELS, this is another form of assessment that specifically looks at the university, happens to be on the agenda tonight. So this is something that teachers are going to be trained on in the fall, with the idea of new implementation later on in the year, so we're not rushing everything at once, we're slowly doing through the trainings for this assessment. And then we're going to have professional development in the fall, winter, in-service days, related to intervention strategies, that will be actually K to eight. We've had discussions at middle school, where both teachers and administrators have looked at similar ideas in centers, having small group instruction, that's something we moved away from in middle school, we need to bring it back. But we're going to bring it back with some support, professional development for teachers at middle school. It looks a little bit different, kids are used to it, kids understand how to move through centers, but how you move for secondary, contact curriculum at middle school, a little bit different than elementary, so we're going to support that with that, this fall. And then a PD plan for IAS, equally important, so in the past, we've offered professional development to instructional systems, mostly on what's required, compliance-type of professional development, so now we're taking a different approach to where we are offering them more specific, skill-based content training. So in September, we will have some PD on what their role would be and how PD, the lack of support, regardless of whether it would be this kind of speed for kindergarten, IAs, and I with, that's what we have, as you can please. But throughout the fall, they are going to receive some training on the foundations as well, so they'll have a chance to sit with partner teachers and to learn about foundations, what their role would look like in that phonics-based program, that's really important, sort of as we're trying to support. October, they'll have a chance to do some small group instruction PD, what that would look like, behaviors support, data collection. November, multi-sensory strategies, and then in March, how to utilize data. So for the most part, these are kindergarten instructional systems in year one, but as we continue to move through the idea of including IAs in how we provide interventions over the next several years, that we will see that expand. But for the moment, we're starting with our kindergarten. And that's really important to keep in mind, because when we talk about interventions and how do we address student needs early on in their academic career, it really starts with prepay, we're pushing up that show-up, prepay program, and it's expanded over the years, those early interventions happen there. We will bring students to kindergarten if we can address those skills and those deficits early on, that's just an advantage, advantages for students, we can close the gap early, and then of course, as well. So that's the last slide of the presentation. I'm going to close with a quick summary, that MTSS is the required model, that is the model that we're using, the best practices, it's tiered interventions, it's nothing new, it's something that we've been doing for a long time. The delivery might look a little bit different, but we're still using that particular model. To anticipate, so a parent of children, children, I would be concerned with, well, what if my son or daughter struggled all year and they were about to fail, but they see some interventions, what's going to happen to them next year? So we continue to track students through that tiered model, so they've been in the district, that we have their data, we understand what their needs are, we continue to build on those skill sets they had in the previous year, that they're not forgotten about, that we continue to add those interventions as it progresses, and we look at where they fall in those tiers. Or it might be a parent who says, well, my son or daughter did fail, what's going to happen next? So we still continue to offer interventions, and there's a pathway to get extra help, right? And so that might be the IRS, Intervention Referral System Process, which our building principals are well-educated on, our teaching staff's well-educated on, there's a committee for that, so there's a pathway for, we've done all of this, and we're still struggling, what happens to that, and so there's a pathway to that. So that concludes the presentation. I will put it up, just coming up with a question.
Oh, yes, that's it. Mike, can I just speak to the process in terms of, I, the sense that
I'll pull back up so you can give me a look at it. So in terms of a sample schedule, so we've been meeting with building principals, we'll meet with them often, with data piece, but in terms of a scheduling piece, we started meeting with them in early spring to get their input, really, they're construction leaders of the building. They have one of the highest stakes in terms of what the schedule looks like, and they're the ones who create the schedule. So we sat with principals, and our directors of student services, and our directors of curriculum instruction, and rounded table what it would look like in terms of a schedule for K to five. Principals have input from teaching staff, so through faculty readings, through their skip teams, school improvement team, they have, teachers have a voice from their cohort to the principal, then the principal to us, so there's a lot of idea sharing around the table. What you're seeing here, again, is What you're seeing here again is a framework. The next steps will be in the next six weeks. Principals will be working on what this looks like in reality. So principals already have their staff. Staff have their assignments. Principals have the framework. They're going to take the framework and put it into action, which means action according to times. How it matches up to other teacher schedules within a grade level, other teachers who are supported by other teachers who teach creative arts. Where those available would just come in terms of adding additional services. So summer work is now taking this the next step.
Speaking of the schedule, could you talk a little bit more about what the intervention block might look like? That seems like that's the point where there'd be a lot going on, progression to tier two, tier three, all in the same place. I'm curious how that would happen.
So the intervention block is when students may leave the classroom for enrichment. So leaving behind a group of students in the classroom with a classroom teacher who may be working with a small group of students while another small group of students is working collectively. Or we have group of students leaving for enrichment, a group of core students staying with Jenna, a teacher working on a skill. And then another teacher, a ESL teacher, for example, would then come in and work with another group of students in that class. So yes, there's a lot of things happening in the intervention block, and there's actually a lot of things happening. We go up into the ELA block, it's number two, center activities. That's a busy classroom. So if you were to walk into that classroom, I would walk in to do an observation in period two. My expectation is it's going to be organized, it's going to be structured, but it's going to be busy. It's not going to be silent. There are going to be, there's going to be a lot of academic talk happening amongst students and teacher. There's some movement, there's going to be manipulatives, it's going to be hands-on, there's going to be technology. There's some times of reading, but those are busy, appropriate times of activity.
I have a question, please. A couple of meetings ago when we were here, we had quite a few parents getting on, being so upset about the staff we were losing and how it was going to impact all of this. From everything you presented, it sounds like everything's being taken care of. So what happened between knowing we were losing so many staff, presenting something that they thought their children were losing? And now? How did that get taken care of, or was it a misconception on the public's part as to their child's needs?
Yeah, so I'll take ownership of that, where when it was my part of the presentation, I don't think I effectively communicated all of this. And so in retrospect, if we had carved out some time for me to do some of this that evening, then perhaps that, and again, there was a question.
Sure.
In retrospect, we had. If we had done some of this, I had done some of this that evening, then I think some of the questions would have been addressed. But that's probably if I'm reflecting on.
Okay, because I remember one specific parent coming up, who said she's an educator too, who does what we were speaking to. And she was in tears saying that a teacher could not handle what we were saying would be done. And you're simply saying that just that we didn't have the time and the place to represent it, the way you're showing here. This was still the intention, it just wasn't communicated.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But to add to that, the stuff is that I think the key piece is that communicating with the teaching staff. And also saying dedicated time, like grade level meetings, even faculty meetings for us, to take a step back and say, we're prioritizing this and any additional items that may be provided, say via email or a five-minute conversation that our principal wants to present on. That's, that has, this has to take priority over some of the information that's taken place and discussed in faculty meetings. So that conversation happened with principals and saying, we need the time, we need that, I think it's thirty hours, thirty hours, right? That we have in the contract that's like dedicated to faculty and grade level meetings. Dualize and maximize that time with our teaching staff, because the other piece is the planning component with the lesson training. So if there's planning for centers to differentiate and target these groups, then they need time to plan that. So that we, that we take responsibility in terms of not articulating that we're giving back time to the teachers to be able to plan that out. And I think that's important, because even the teaching staff, I don't think we would ultimately consider.
And what you're saying makes a lot of sense. How is, how are those little important bits going to get to the staff that will be a part of the staff?
So we have more time, we're front loading a lot in our September days for our in-service days. So I think we added two additional days in September for in-service with the staff at the beginning of the year. So then the time can happen even on those days. And then even looking at like, just whatever's being delivered. We know that like test dating, protocols, things like that, that's a must, that has to happen, so we need an hour. But the other items, we kind of look at it and say, let's make it more instructional meetings, which some of our principals asked to do that this year. We had two principals that kind of used that model, so they used the hour. And they said, okay, I'm going to do half an hour of baby information. And then the other half was geared towards instruction, instructional discussion, or they're breaking out to groups and utilizing that to kind of, for their own personal learning. So it actually works out well that the two principals asked to do that this year.
Set the model.
Yeah, it kind of set the model, and the other principals are just kind of.
So we have a system where they're going to dedicate, you know, as an educator, a minute meetings where, oh, you know, we're done, there's twenty minutes left. And there's going to be an emphasis on the academic pieces. And what I hear you saying most likely is this is all going to be planned out this summer. You know what you're going to be getting at all staff needs, that instructional.
Yes, agreed. And even grade level meetings, some of them were canceled this year. And so Mr. Min and I were looking at that in terms of, okay, why were they canceled then? Don't cancel for a lot of these things that we can't cover. Whether it's our directors of critical instruction, don't matter, even asking, you know, giving them to, really talk amongst themselves on what's working and what's not working, you know, asking for time.
Thank you.
Nice, pick up the question. So the first one is, this takes into account, I was thinking, we've been driving to the pilot program, something like this, right? So it's taken into account, you can start that.
Yes.
In terms of tier two versus tier three, so does tier three always have an extra, that's always an extra staff member? So it's not the one teacher that's in the classroom being expected to do tier one, tier two?
Correct.
So that's how they get the extra intervention.
Yes.
And then tier two, so I don't know how many classrooms within K five that have an exact number, but have an additional support staff member in the rooms? Is it third of the classrooms have, like, is it a lot of the classrooms, K three, five, that have the second staff member in the class?
So kindergarten, all, because they have instructional systems, like, a hundred percent. And then as you move up, it depends. So if you have a classroom where there's in-class support teacher, servicing specialized students, that there's a second person in the room, still working with your specialized students, nothing's being taken away, but there's a second person in the room. So we get to some of these other times that you have a second adult in the room. It would tough to say percentage, maybe around a third.
Because I'm just trying to figure, so during that time at the end of the day, now that I know tier three always has an extra person that helps me, because otherwise it seems like a lot of person, one teacher group. A lot of us potentially already have a second person, and then tier three guarantees the extra person that helps me. And then in terms of the planning that goes into, in the summer, when the principals are planning out which children go into which classrooms, is it going to be, I know, I wish I can't say exactly, but you know, because it's balanced? So the needs in each classroom are similar? Or I just don't want one classroom to be so heavy that one teacher just parents.
Correct. So it's spread out. So we're going to use heterogeneously groups versus homogeneous. So heterogeneous means that there's a mix of all kinds of skill abilities in a classroom. Or homogeneous means that every one of us is a type. So not homogeneous, heterogeneous where it's a mix, it's balanced.
Several questions I can maybe comment to. So I want to echo Laurie's comments about, we've got a lot of emails from parents when you make those announcements about staff introduction. So how are we going to get in touch with specific parents? And I don't know how we can be able to keep track of things here to explain this to them. And I think really frankly, Laurie, the other students a lot that are, I mean, I can look at it, it makes sense of it somewhat. But I'm not a teacher, I mean, I'm sure a teacher could look at that and know exactly what that means. But as a parent, I need more information than that about how the schedule works and also some of these, you know, tools, like my view versus foundations that you have and all that stuff. So that would be my suggestion to either, you know, figure out how we're going to tell parents. I don't know if it's when we identify those students that need other interventions or just tell that, or some of the parents should appear. I have a question about how the staff is reacting to any of all of this in terms of, because their buy-in is going to be making this successful. So I just want to kind of get the texture of how they're feeling about it.
Let me actually address the first question first, in terms of communicating with parents. So that evening, the main, our principals were a year. So they had an idea, they were getting the pulse of, and they had an idea, well, actually this year, asking questions. So you had that first connection. And as we go through the summer and we evolve back, so the principals have an opportunity to connect with parents through book, letters, through orientations, with the grade levels, back to school bodies. So you've got the principal piece, but of course, you have a group of teacher pieces on it, where teachers are the greatest communicators with families because they have that connection, they have an opportunity to communicate with the other that they had too. There's a lot of avenues where communications of teacher, principal, in terms of how to communicate out some of the rollout interventions. And then in terms of the pulse of staffs, we're very fortunate that we have great group of staff, very professional understanding of where we are with the needs of our students. You know, tier one and tier two, always a window. If you're a teacher, you kind of know what you're getting into. If you're taught in your undergrad program, tier one intervention is going to look like. How do you do centers for tier two? That is not changing, and we're actually, that would be more possible. So that's a good thing, in fact, that teachers want more support, they want more sharing. Sometimes teachers, which are happening October, they want to be able to be integral and talk to each other and have horizontal articulation. So third grade talking to third grade in all three buildings. And they want, they asked for this, we did it last year, and we did it again, vertical articulation. So a third grade teacher talking to fourth grade teachers, third grade teachers talking to second grade teachers. So we started it last October, we're going to normalize it, structure even more, really understanding interventions. They're asking for that, and so we're working on that.
And then, I wanted to know if there's any data showing like the difference between physical resources in instructional handouts, textbooks versus screens? It's like a study somewhere, I don't know where, I'm not too minded, that screens actually aren't as successful, especially for younger grades. And I'm assuming that we're not relying on that as a, as a. And then also, if you have any data or information about the home environment support for this? So interventions happening at school, and if reinforcement happening at home, or is it able to happen at home? Is there anything, I mean, I'm assuming that that just moves them into a different tier group and then additional support is provided, so that's.
Okay, so I'll maybe address those. So in terms of research on screen time, our research colleagues, E A B, they actually presented to us in one of our monthly calls fairly recently, they did a whole research project on screen time. And so we shared that with our building principals, fantastic article, research that they've done across the country in terms of the amount of screen time and the quality of screen time for students. And so now, the pendulum often swings in education. Where we were, the swing pre-COVID was, let's get one-to-one, where every student has some type of wireless technology, that is the swing. We become the COVID, fortunately, we were in a position where we could be one-to-one, and necessity. Now we're starting to swing back the other way, we're seeing, it's a valuable tool, but to be in front of a screen all day, every day, delivering all content? Not the best approach. So we're swinging back that way, and there's more research that's worth that.
Well, I think to the foundations is not great, for example, my voice at it. I don't know if you guys, where your kids were telling the district, my voice at foundations.
Yes.
I'll tell you what happened last week, so I don't remember. That's another question.
The parent support piece of it, I'll give you a hypothetical. So let's say that we have an elementary classroom where we have anecdotal data saying that mom, dad, darling, just does not have enough time to read, kid or child at home in the evenings. Which is a practice that we hold for our children, it's an important practice to do, but it's a face of that mom and dad may not have the time. During that intervention block or during that center time, an appropriate intervention would be for a classroom teacher to do a read aloud to the entire class. So that's information that we do have, we gather, classroom teachers gather that information, they give that feedback from parents. And so that's an appropriate piece of time as well.
So I would add the screen time that many programs that we improve that is to be utilized in those centers, that the max time is usually twenty minutes. So that's why it's so long. So if you're on, so let's say for example, a small group, I mean, they're on a computer for twenty minutes. Then when they're to a chome, then the whole group should be, it should be direct instruction. It should be down for another forty minutes, that is split time in addition to twenty minutes, that's its home time, and then deeper instruction. So those are things that you can back down and moderate throughout, but like, well, you see tonight, a lot of the breaking, the research is shown, it's twenty, it's, the research shows rate growth for usually twenty minutes. Especially for other.
Yeah, I think a lot of things are kind of going old school, which is, you have to figure out that it wasn't working before we decided to go back, but. The other, the only other thing I had was, I guess, well, I wanted, I did talk about how is this thirty percent of the parents? What about, in terms of breaking this down by minutes, like, they're not, they don't have stopwatch in the classroom. How are they, how are they really figuring out how much time they're spending on stuff?
Well, in some cases they do, because somewhere in there, they have to stop for lunch, and it's not for specials, they stop for bathroom break, they stop for snack break. So again, our veteran teachers know this too quickly, they don't have to have a stopwatch or clock. Our younger teachers, that's something that we mentor, our younger teachers, our newer teachers, that they have to go, when it's appropriate to stop, to do a brain break, to get up and stretch. And all those things have to be worked into the day. So when you break down, so there's two hundred and forty instructional minutes. That's what's provided to the teaching staff, it's just a contract. Within those two hundred and forty minutes, we have a hundred and twenty minutes of flying charts. They may need a hundred and thirty minutes flying charts of one particular day. They don't have time to take ten minutes with something else, because at some point in a hundred and eighty days, they'll be able to make up for ten minutes that they took from something else. So they, the teachers have, they automate on how they utilize the time that's best for their students.
I remembered one other thing. So I do remember that when my kids were both in kindergarten, they had instructional aids in everywhere. But I feel like they were there as kind of a help to the teacher in terms of just keeping the kids under control, for like, whatever. So these, the instructional assistants and aids of today are actually instruction, giving instruction versus just making sure that someone's not even paced.
Yes, there's a big difference between the classroom aid and an instructional assistant. So we employ instructional assistants, a little bit within the title of their, their job title. The idea is that they help the teacher instruct students. We're very, very lucky that we have instructional assistants around. Substitute certificate is, we have instructional assistants who hold valid standard Jersey teacher certificates. They just chose for this point, they're like, they want instructional assistance. They have to hold the knowledge base that they can be a master, a homologous.
Just to add though, that the I, the instructional assistants aren't doing a plan, right? So the teacher is doing the plan, that's their setting. If the assistant is responsible for that setting, then it's such that the teacher and the I, the I is, so it's that or something that the I may be in a position, she usually won't, you know, jump to the side, that's structural support. And that's very, very facilitated on that one. So the level of trust and ease of comfort, well, in terms of the duo, that we have in the classroom is going to be comfortable. I did want to comment about the information that is, that as we are now, we will be releasing the website, that we will, we have an MTSS guide that was done, I think it was pre-COVID or maybe even after COVID, that it had to be. that was done, I think it was pre-COVID or maybe even after COVID, that it had to be revised. So the team will be working on that, making sure that that's basically accessible with the terminology and then it almost, we've done a sample by a other schedule two as well. And then we run K three and then we're fine.
And we don't have any aids, they're all instructional assistance?
We have transportation aids, but structural systems, IAs are in the classroom.
In terms of support for our teacher, it will turn out that, that some teachers will be implementing tier three interventions more than other teachers. How are we going to ensure that those teachers, particularly are best supported when they're struggling with tier three kids more so than some of their, their classes?
So that's where, for example, our L D C, our buildings would be helpful, I get lucky, I keep signing the document with that, portion of the positions. Our director of student services is a former L D C, so she's going to be doing quite a bit of training with, with the IAs, and she's going to help get training for our senior grade features. So we have people on the staff who have the drive, support, and development of their students.
Um, I just have a few questions, so, um, we got rid of, well, I won't say change, the having the push and pull out, right? So it's kind of teacher incorporated differently, same instruction, but you don't have that extra body that would come and take the kids or come into the classroom, correct?
We don't have, so we can't talk too much personnel, but we don't have, up until this year, the staff members who were dedicated just to that goal, pushing in the way out, those staff members are now in the classroom. However, we have other staff, our next schedules that can free people up to do interventions, but the people here think that remind about the classrooms. So that, that's where the change is.
Okay, and, and so when you had said, so just looking at the tiers, so one obviously understood, two, two going into three for sure. When it gets, there'll definitely be an extra in the room. Um, that's where I got kind of confused, because I thought that you weren't doing an extra in the room and that this is going to be on that main teacher to differentiate.
Yes, I think sometimes this goes back to, it's got some comments we heard at a meeting in May, the term extra. So that can be misleading. So the additional feature going into the room is to push in for tier two supports if needed and tier pushing for tier three if needed. But that same teacher, they're still at the level of pull. ESL is a good example. So our ESL students pull out, right? So they can get those particular interventions that still exists, the teacher was still there, the program was still there, so that, that still is happening. It's just the variation of who and the where is speed, that's probably still a question.
Okay, it just, it just sounds almost the same to me then, once you get to two and three, then I'm like, well, wait a minute, if we still have the push and pull out, then it just doesn't sound as different as.
Yeah, you're, that's, you're, good reading on. So we're just utilizing the staff, yeah, we're utilizing the staff.
Okay, so I think then also that, and this is just practice, this is what's, we've gone off years, is that we're always separated in special ed. Kids who are getting services because of compliance, because of I D fees, then you have, what we had from the model, who's an interventionist that were also servicing kids and they have been doing some pull out services as well. So some of the staff were actually utilizing maybe from special ed, but they may take like two kids that live in with an interventionist and that's the additional support. So what I would say is that it's our kids, it's not necessarily just, because not if they're, I'm not compliant for I D fees. But if there are two friends who join in on a group and we're not out of compliance, then they don't have kids that they're sending to the same institution too, then that's okay to do and even if that's a law for the administration. So you're kind of sharing this back.
Okay, um, thank you. So, um, some of which Shido had said too, so I, so if, if foundations, why did we get rid of it if we're bringing it back?
So we have foundations going strong pre-COVID.
Right.
Foundations, and some of that, so it's not what we need to deliver online. And so now we're in that, that two year, we've got what we're doing, virtual learning. It went away, it means that they have to, couldn't deliver phonics based instruction with fidelity on the year. So now we come back with turnover and staff, we're back in person, we go hybrid, we're full. And so foundations have all the modern ways I do for training materials. It's a research-based program, it's something that this is present, I have both strongly believed in, so its results are good. And so it's time to bring that back, and now we're in opportunity to do this.
And the staff mostly is, is positive with that, I mean, happy with that?
Yes, yes.
Did we have anything that we were using or, so, so my thing is that one of the questions that I brought up is bringing in so many programs. And so you feel like you have, you're using pieces of each program versus utilizing what we have and not spending all the extra money for these programs? That we maybe have a little here, a little there, consolidating, so, um, do we have to fully reinvest back into foundations because we didn't have?
No, we didn't. We had, we had to fully invest in grade two because we had never done that before, and that's important in the next step in process. K one, because it did exist, teacher mentors, for example, still do it, still have in the district. We actually have a survey out of the K one teachers, check the room and see what you have, or what you're adding, material, we actually have quite a bit of stuff still here. So we didn't have to do a full reinvest, there were some of the small materials, some of the stuff like that. Then you can order people to re-learn, so materials are all here. To answer your question about how teachers feel about it, the teaching staff who had used foundations pre-2020 loved it and are excited to come back because they know it works. And that's a big difference. Wouldn't, if you ever have an opportunity to teach kids how to read, or be in a room where kids are emerging readers, it's one of the best things that you can experience as an educator, is you see that growth. Sometimes it happens really, really quick, and sometimes it happens over ten months or over fourteen months, but to see that blossom. That's what we added benefits, and I'm even at this time as a management teacher myself, like that, that's the intrinsic value of being an educator. They see that through those programs, that's what I'm trying to say.
Steph, Steph, I also said about two that, because we, my view is we're in year four.
Yes, we're in year.
So we're in year four at the same time, I remember COVID, during COVID, we were also implementing the literacy program. That literacy program didn't need to go to foundations. Um, and we had, typically when you start a program, you want to keep fidelity to that program and not start to add or bring in other programs in addition that you need to stay in the program, see what's working, it's not, the first few years end up bringing foundations back. So some of the staff wanted foundations at the same time to put the benefit in. So that's the other piece too, is that we have, we have to get in terms of collecting data and see data, to track the program component, both the data. Now they had, and now we have enough facilitation data to say that we need it in smaller schools.
Uh, and it just led to the same idea, um, so not being a teacher, this, this seems like so much. And so, you know, my, my mind immediately goes to the huge differentiation, which teachers have to do anyway, regardless. So I worry about, and Shido had said, which I had a big concern about, is the buy-in, because I know you had mentioned. So if you have all the three teachers that are going to, hey, I, I could use help with two of these kids, you can take, I'll take your two and I'll be. And so all of that is, uh, there's so much, you know, collaboration that has to happen there and organization and communication just among that little cluster itself. So if you have one in that group that's kind of like, eh, you're not going to be able to function as a whole correctly. You don't have everyone participating.
So I can share, so I started my teaching career as a fourth grade teacher, so you're completely correct, it's a lot. So when you're a fourth grade teacher, you do it all.
Yeah.
So I was pushing up to middle school where it is taught English, but when you teach it all, it is a lot. So I would say to any teacher who feels overwhelmed or there's some trepidation about anything that they're presented with in terms of their instruction, that they should collaborate with their teaching partners, they should speak with their, their personal, they should speak with our members of curriculum instruction. They, they all know they can come and speak, I mean, I hope they feel that that group is always open to them, that we're here listening to support them. So if they are feeling overwhelmed, that they should, that's really important. Part of the buy-in process, knowing that there's support here, like have the opportunity to safely say, I need to do that something. We know it works, but it takes support. And I don't want to mislead any more members or that when we walk away, they see that we're ready to open school tomorrow, this, this is ready to go. But that's not the case. The next six weeks for our building principals, our directors, and for me, is to really grow our speed and get our hands dirty with this. And then planning what, obvious what fresh developments are going to look like, September, fall, winter. So there's a lot, a lot, a lot of work that will be happening in the summertime. And the calendar having to work our favor, where we've actually picked up almost three additional weeks of summer. So that gives us a great opportunity to do a lot of work, get a lot accomplished with our building workers.
And then last thing, if I just think, um, I don't know if staff will come, you know, I mean, so if you're a newer teacher, if you're a younger teacher, do you want to move forward and say, hey, I need help, I'm having a problem? I would, I would want to think that they're going to, but it's also intimidating. They have peers that have been maybe around for a long time. Um, maybe they would go to them before going, going to admin or their building principal. So when, when training is, is going with the teachers, do you guys push the issue, hey, it's okay, come to us if you need help? Like, so they hear that through the message of the training and to reach out, rather than reach out than, than feel buried and not happy.
So probably the best example would be, so this is brand new for grade two. Couple of weeks ago, we trained our grade two staff on foundations and I attended. So when I'm in the room and they can see that I'm there and I'm with them, unfortunately, I have a background in English language arts and they, they know that. I hope that helps with that, that next step of buying where I'm invested, I want them to be invested. I know I've seen the results from my elementary principal in K eight over there, I saw the different foundations. Again, it's repeating that message, showing that we, we are invested, we are invested, like there's a difference in community business.
All right, thank you. If I could follow up on, since that was said, this one has, one thing you said that I think there's another relance to this, and you might have been able to follow up on. What happens when that trio has one person that's not pulling their weight? What is the system in place, not that they're struggling, but they're not pulling their weight? Is that coming up in evaluations, is that coming up in administrators walking around, stepping into the room? Like, do people feel comfortable to say that someone is not doing what they need to do in that trio as that way? That's what you were talking about too, right? Yeah, like, let's say there's three third grade teachers and one, like what you're doing for project in school and you have one kid that's like, eh, you guys do it. It's not there, because you have one that's not invested, and so will they work? I mean, you have to work with somebody, so how do you complain about somebody? So that's one of the processes or something like that?
So where, where we would see it in a formal setting would be doing an evaluation or observation evaluation of the staff. But we may not see this, I'm going to go maybe do an evaluation, which we would hope it would be. But you're talking about when there's no one watching, how are we doing ourselves? So again, we do have very.
Is there a process for them to step forward that one of them might feel comfortable? Do they know that it's a channel that they can take?
So they, so if you're a newer teacher, you know you have a language arts, right? And so you made that connection from the learning. If you are a newer teacher or a vet teacher, you know, for example, you have your building rep. And so that, that's an important person in every building, where you have that intermediary and I'll look at Mr. Wilk for just a moment, I'm sure he would come up to the microphone and say that as administrators, we have a very good working relationship with our building reps and with our teachers association where we're, we've put a lot of time in investing in the relationships from administrators at the staff room about our whole, that those relationships have paid dividends in terms of staff being comfortable to have those conversations. And it's about being adults, right? So we get to that point where someone's not pulling their weight, it's a learning experience as an employee of what to do.
And then maybe other case, that's what you started talking about, it's all about communication and how we're communicating. And I, like you, am concerned with people who came to the board meeting, they'd be checking on a website and see what happened. How are we going to make sure we're communicating? And we've said this before, from my experience where I'm sitting, you are doing a phenomenal job. But when people come here, when emails go out on Friday night, people are left thinking that they're not doing our job. We need to change that. And I think your point is very strong to say, how do we, they state their name and they love stuff, and I think, it's not, you're taking notes, I think. So we're not, right? So those people, I think, do deserve a communication saying, you know, what you said, as far as, we're sorry, we should have been more clear about this. I want you to know that the children are taken care of, like here's a layout of how, so I don't know if there's anything more you want to say about this work. I think that's an important point that you mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, when Rosa was talking about having informational books, and my brain was sitting about, okay, but how do I get people to go there? So maybe it's, maybe it's, you know, an email or, you know, I was thinking along the lines of getting the information out of these, but there's, there may be other ways.
Multiple ways.
Yeah.
Would it be possible, would it be possible to pre-host this, maybe closer to starting again? So invite parents to, you know, at a, at a different, you know, at an M T S S meeting for those, for the parents who were concerned. Is that like more info, that idea?
Yeah, so it's a great idea, and that's the type of thing that the building of all the principals can host. Because their parents will want to ask more specific questions that the principal more connected with. So that, that's, I think that's a great idea. And I'll follow up with this for the board. In October, we're required to come up and do a presentation on the previous year's testing payments of this past October. I actually left and did a whole presentation on the board, we were aware of where it was, for grades three through eight and then nine through twelve. English language arts, math, science, all the numbers, you know, all those language arts. We can actually do an update on this in October. By that point, we will have started school, we will have done September's worth of universal screening. And we will have started placing students, and it's mid-October, we already had a couple of weeks of interventions happening. And so I can provide the board an update along with the assessment data. Anyway, I can do a quick update as part of the presentation, so you'll, you'll have some knowledge. And then, again, we're trying to hit as many people as many bodies as possible.
And one last question about, what about the grades beyond what's been examined tonight?
So at middle school, we have an academic advisory that's, something's been happening for a while and it's going to be a restructuring. So therefore, it has taken a closer look at what that is, what that tutoring looks like, and he's really structured that, knowing what, he has good elementary experience, what's needed from elementary to middle school. We have a most program, which is an after-school program for tutoring, it's about promoting that for middle school, high school. High school has built into the day academic sessions where they can get additional assistance as well. So that it's happening at secondary six through twelve, doesn't happen at the, seem valuable percentages as a board in elementary, it's going to be much more specific. So we do have a program to place six to twelve, it's just that this is much more comprehensive and evolved.
Yeah, I would ask that we take a look at the, so I know from personal experience that the peer-to-peer tutoring at the high school, everybody goes in and they just all sit there because you're not going to ask your friend that you said was at lunch to help him with your calculus homework, so. And there's a, there's a teacher in the room who does step in when needed, but I mean, that's an age where kids are a little hesitant to say that they're not understanding something. So I don't know if it's, maybe it's kids in their own program or something that they know they want to do this, so they're getting, they're getting this important to on how to engage the kids that are coming for the help, because, I mean, just from experience, what I know, a lot, most of those kids were there for their community service hours.
Yep.
Um, and they weren't, the kids that needed the help were not showing up. So I think we really need to figure out how to make that work a little bit better, particularly at high school.
I would agree with that. That's interesting, so it's, not to derail the conversation, but I didn't know that, so at the high school, it's, it's like not structured. I mean, they had the, I don't know if this was before, I don't know if this went on this year, but at, at middle school.
I don't know if this went on this year, but in, at middle school, last year, at J H S, that same kind of thing, were people that, I think, would volunteer to, to do peer-to-peer tutoring. They would literally care as much, and that was the schedule, like, I'm going to see Tom every day, and, or every other day, or whatever time, during our lunch period, this time, we go to the library, and we do this, and it's always going to be me and Tom, like, a little like that.
No, and that's actually great, but that's how my daughter does it at college. She's paid to, like, they, they give, you know, people sign up for her.
Yeah, yeah. No, this is true, it's just students are showing up at J H S, due to their community service hours. Students are showing up to get their credit covered, they sit there in a chair. And my child comes home and says, I wasn't meaning to help any. Oh. Yeah, most of the time they don't. Wow, and we're, I mean, not to name names, but I happen to know a child who spent a whole year with a child, and they also build a great friendship, because of this, that they, they, they asked for it together. I don't know, favorites, come on. That's fun. This is tremendous. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much. Is there anything else from Mr. Moore's report?
End of the year was a lot of fun, it was very active, with celebrations that came along for participating, and being able to see, um, markets being promoted or just being celebrated. There are definitely a lot across the district, we did as well, so we had a, it's definitely a business. We've been working on the ready for next year, so some people. So just something fun, things that we're doing, the partnership, we're doing a fit to lead on the cloud two times a week, and we're going to talk to, um, and then go on, um, and track. So, it's, it's a few updates, just to get that, um, so it'll be fun. So we'll have our fit to lead, and then we are also doing a book read, which is, the leadership team is on the call for Wednesday, so like, watch and learn every Wednesday, and we are reading the five levels of leadership by Maxxall. So that'll be starting to lock the first week over.
Thank you, thank you.
And they are, we also have our professional development plan with Dr. Bossis, so what we did at the board retreat, we're doing by the fall, the administrators as well. So that should be, that'll be fun too.
Thank you so much.